Good evening and welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for Thursday, May 26, 2022. Time is 7:05 PM. First on the agenda is reorganization. Shall we wait for Jacob?
What about Meg? Does she come?
Yeah.
She's not on yet, though.
She is planning to join remotely.
Okay.
So Mr. Schultzberg is not here. So, okay, we'll wait one more meeting for a full board, hopefully, in the middle of summer time. And Citizens Forum call for public comment. Anyone here from the public? Seeing none. Public hearing, 7:00 PM. Hearing continued from May 12, 2022. CRG Services Management LLC, application for site plan review, 105 and 123 Gilboa Street and 470 Northeast Main Street. Possible votes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did review the meeting online on TV, and I did sign the
mulligan.
Mulligan.
Okay, sure. We'll accept that. Thank you. I do have that, the Mullen rule statute in my file. Thank you. Or if you're on the course, you can have a mulligan, too. Name and address, yes?
Once again, Todd Maury, Beals Associates, Two Park Plaza, Suite 200, Boston, Mass. With me this evening also is Frank McUnas from CRG, right over my shoulder here, and Bob Manerick's with us this evening as well. So, same as last time, I can put the site plan up. I don't know if anybody needs to see it again. I think we've now addressed pretty much everything there is to address. We've been going back and forth with Matthew here on the conditions in your decisions. I think we've reached a consensus on all of those items. I know that our team has thoroughly reviewed it. I believe Matthew has thoroughly reviewed it. That's really all I have for you.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's any additional questions.
Board, any questions or remaining concerns?
Oh, one, on the bridge you're putting across?
Yes, sir.
Have you contracted with anybody to do that bridge yet or anything? Do we have plans of that? I didn't even think.
There are plans of it in the overall plans, sir. Yep, and the final construction drawings, and those are actually being developed as we speak, and those will go out with the general construction plans.
Thank you.
But as far as I know, there's not an individual firm that's been selected yet.
Thank you.
So we typically don't close, well, conservation typically closes after, right? So you're looking to request the board to close the public hearing?
Yes, that's what I heard when I was at conservation last.
Okay, can refresh my memory. Mrs. Zwick?
The other thing, I have one thing. Matt, do you have a general overlay on how it's going to be all broken down as far as?
Construction sequence?
Yeah.
Phasing?
Maybe timetable and stuff like that, and or?
Sure. Great question. Through the chair to Mr. Maury. One of the conditions of the decision draft is to provide a construction phasing plan, a chart kind of showing the timetable. They have to submit that with their building permits at that time, too. We will be expecting that.
Okay, so I'll end. Anyone from the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing? I'm not seeing anyone. We have everyone out of the waiting room?
Yeah, Madam Chair, on Zoom, we have, the security on this one had a password for some reason. I did get the password. I just placed it on the calendar in case anyone is looking for it. Usually it doesn't have a password. I don't know why it does this time, but we do. So I just put it on the calendar. I just didn't want you to go too far without knowing that.
Can we take the password off right now?
I'm looking at options here on this Zoom.
I've only seen, yes.
Our voting members that are eligible to vote are all here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Just, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make that clear.
That's the only aspect that I haven't returned about is that case.
I would just, I would just remove the password for the moment.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if it's convenient for the board, I'm happy to just sit there for 10 minutes and just give everybody, if anybody has a chance.
If we could just table you for
Just to make sure.
A couple minutes, that would be great.
Okay.
Or other applicants.
Happy to do so.
Participants also.
Appreciate that.
Oh, okay, okay. So there may be an issue with that password requirement. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for CRG Services Management to 7:20 PM.
So 7:15?
Motion made by Mr. Marks, second by Mr. Zwick. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need roll call? Are we okay?
No, we're good. No one's on, and so we have a consensus.
Great.
Just want to, let's.
Do some.
Should we wait on the other public hearing?
Yes. Well, yeah, we're at 7:11 right now. Mr. Benoit, what would you like to start with for our discussion?
I'll start by emailing this password to the participants.
I think we should just remove the password, even if we have to go off and then come back on. Cable is here, so I think we should just reconvene.
All right. I definitely have some things, I suppose.
Pat, do we need to go off Zoom and then come back on to remove that password?
That might be the easiest way. I can do that.
Okay, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to pause the meeting at recess at 7:11 PM to 7:14 PM. Motion made by Mr. Marks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zwick. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Douglas Planning Board meeting, Thursday, May 26, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene our meeting at 7:20 PM. Motion made by Mrs. Zwick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are, we are back, and Ms. Schleschman is on remote, and she said aye, so she is present. CRG Services Management LLC, application for site plan review. So, continue. So we're ready for closing the public hearing and voting on the site plan approval.
Anybody in the audience?
I don't believe anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing. I don't know who the red person is. I can't see.
It's tape.
Who is it?
It's tape over a screen.
Oh. Okay. Board, do we want to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
For CRG Services Management LLC for 105 and 123 Gilboa Street and 470 Northeast Main Street.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwick, second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwick, aye.
Like abstain.
Ms. Schleschman, I think I can't vote on this item, though, because I haven't been involved.
Right, so abstain?
Abstain, yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, Board, I'll entertain a motion to grant the site plan approval with conditions. Motion made by Mrs. Zwick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwick, aye.
Abstain?
Thank you.
Okay, all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
So we have a decision here. All the members sign it, and it should be available tomorrow if the town clerk's in the office.
I'm into a special permit. Site plan approval is good the day.
Yeah, so according to our bylaw, we have an appeal period for it, which means we shouldn't, but we do.
Okay. Okay, moving on, 7:22 PM, 7:15, public hearing continued from 5:12, 2022, Sutton Douglas Development, application for definitive subdivision Mumford Road and 5 Forest Street. Possible votes. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Benoit, Wayne Bellick, Land Design Collaborative. I'm here with Tim Flynn of Flynn Build and Develop. Since our, and joining us tonight will also be, my understanding, Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering here remotely as he has done his peer review. And with that, what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is typical of our program, have Mr. Flynn fire up the presentation, and we'll go through that if that pleases the Board. So the thought would be that we would look to address a couple of the questions that the Board had at our last meeting.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
One second. That's very odd. That's very odd. Some, at some point.
Holiday weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, who decided on this meeting? I'm wondering.
Celebrating early.
Yeah. Okay, I do not see our consultant on the line. So he may be having trouble. So just like conservation, I'd like to go over what is in contention versus what has been agreed upon.
Yeah.
And then you are in the process of revising your plan set?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So you do not have a plan set tonight?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So we're still waiting?
Yep.
Okay.
So the plan would be to have the plans back to you folks next week along with the stormwater, revised stormwater report based on the review by Graves Engineering. Basically, truth be told, part of the delay, we did have, one of our lots in Sutton was a nonconforming situation. We didn't have enough upland area. They have a requirement that the minimum lot area has to be free of easements.
Right.
So there was a full pile there. We actually lost a lot. So it's gone from 31 down to 30.
So let's get to the
Conservation.
Yes. Well, no, not conservation, just for Planning Board, which items are in contention for us to make a decision, if we need to make a decision.
Sure.
On any of the contentious sites.
Sure. So I think the, you know, questions that were raised by the Commission, as you're aware, there were some questions about natural heritage. That is no longer an issue. We've received information from them indicating what we suspected all along. No stormwaters headed in that direction, and we're not proposing any work within their jurisdiction. In terms of contention with the
With the Planning Board.
What's with that?
With the Planning Board. Anything within that peer review letter pertaining to the Planning Board?
Gotcha. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, so at this point, overall, there really isn't anything. We have, basically, in terms of Graves Engineering peer review, it was a fairly thorough peer review, but we seem to have met their requirements. One of the things that they asked us to do was the soil testing, as you're aware. We did go out there, and that's worked out really well. The numbers that we came up with, we assumed based on preliminary soil testing that the estimated seasonal high groundwater were going to be at certain elevations. And lo and behold, we found that in a couple instances it was actually lower. So in that particular case, what we had done is we had lowered the bottom of the basins, providing a little bit more capacity. In one of the basins, it was just a hair higher, and we were able to compensate one of the other basins. So from that perspective, with Graves Engineering and their peer review letter, and I think Jeff, when he gets on, will be able to attest to that, that we're pretty much there at this point. The only thing that they need from us is the revised plans based on our responses to their comments and the revised stormwater report. Other than that, we're there.
Okay. Are you looking for anything specific from the Board tonight?
We are. So we do have, as you recall, we did have waivers that the Board was gracious enough to grant, I think it was at the last meeting we had attended. So thank you very much again.
You're welcome.
We have another waiver request that we have. And I'm not going to delve into the meat and potatoes of how we work our software at the office. So we run AutoCAD Civil 3D, and I think, Madam Chair, I think you're familiar with that software. So when we run it, each seat is a very expensive seat. That's probably one of the more expensive pieces of software, as you know. So my approach has always been that you have the software work for you. Don't work the software. So we don't use it as a drafting tool. We use it as a design tool. Everything is associated. So with that said, if we move an alignment of a roadway, we have a profile, and grading is done with drainage, everything gets updated, okay? Everything's associated. The way it also works is that our details, believe it or not, are linked to our base drawing. So if we know we're calling up a certain spec item, a catch basin, for instance, a catch basin with a granite gutter mouth on it, then that makes reference to a certain detail, and the detail is automatically linked to the project so that it appears in the detailed sheet. So the point is, under your subdivision rules and regs to which we're requesting a waiver to, there's a naming protocol to correlate the details to the drawings, the design drawings. Excuse the terminology, but we would need to bastardize our system and our design to get it, to read that. So basically it'd be nonassociative. So we're seeking a waiver. We're seeking a waiver to this.
Is it in writing?
It is.
Waiver request?
Yes.
Okay.
We have provided, we sent a letter to you folks via email.
What is the waiver request?
The waiver request is up on the screen. It's request to
Conditions of the sheets?
Correct. Yes.
I don't know if it made it into the packet.
No, it is. So specifically, what are you requesting?
We are requesting a waiver two. If I could read it, Madam Chair, and then
4.2.3F for the definitive plan, the contents of the plan.
That's correct.
This sheet will reflect the proposed site improvements and shall be presented in a clear and logical manner, so it is easily legible for the scale that is drawn, and so it is easily distinguishable from the existing conditions that are shown on the drawing. Furthermore, the proposed condition sheets shall use leaders and labels referencing specific details by detail letter and detail sheet number. See figure below, for example. What are you deviating from? Your sheets are laid out sequentially based on construction progress, beginning with erosion control and finishing with landscaping. The plans are easy to follow, and historically, we haven't had any issues.
That's correct. So basically, if we were to change our labels in our CAD drawings, it'd be very tedious and time consuming.
Okay.
Right now, they're just automatically linked to the detailed sheets sequentially.
So how is, what is your waiver request specifically from?
Our waiver request is to 4.2.3. F, and I did spell it out, the justification for it, if you'd like me to read that.
Specifically, so is it a different, you need to say specifically, the established styles are different, right?
That's correct.
The style of the content.
That's correct.
Mr. Benoit, do you have any issue with the styling of there? Okay.
No, this is an advancement in technology that we weren't ready for in 2009.
Okay, so we will make a note that maybe we can change this in the next town meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to grant the waiver requested as written.
So moved.
Mr. Zwick made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor? Roll call, please.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwick, aye.
Ms. Schleschman abstain?
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. We did have, there were some questions raised by the Board. I'd like to just respond to those, just for the record. So when we met with you folks on April 28, we were hoping to meet with you folks on the 12th, but I happen to be one of the lucky recipients of COVID. So we then requested the continuance. There was a question regarding the seasonal traffic, you know, and the increase of that due to the summer camping activity here in town. So that discussion has also been raised by the Town of Sutton and discussed with MDM, the peer review traffic consultant and the town planner. And if I could, I did have an email from our traffic consultant.
Yes.
And I would like to read that. And so basically, what she wrote is, "At the request of the Sutton Town Planner, and to address comments raised by the residents at the public hearings, Tetra Tech is preparing a transportation assessment of the anticipated increase in traffic volumes associated with the area campgrounds that were either closed or not fully occupied when the traffic counts were collected in 2021." And then she said, "We expect that the study intersections will be able to accommodate the peak season traffic volume conditions and expect the study intersections to operate at an acceptable level of Service D or better operations during the few months of the year that the campgrounds are active. The traffic assessment is being prepared and will include capacity analyses to conform." As the Board remembers, recalls, from the study, they analyzed those intersections, and they were level of Service A. Based on the correspondence and then the public record with MDM, they felt that even with this minor increase in traffic volume generated from the site, that you're still probably looking at a level Service A, worst case is B. So that was with respect to traffic. The other question that had come up from the Board was, what about the intersection of Bellevoir and Birch? How does, because if you folks recall, we looked at maneuvers in and out of the site for fire apparatus, and one of the Board members had requested that we look at your actual vehicle, because we looked at the behemoth of a vehicle larger than that of the Town of Douglas. So what we had done is this vehicle here, I've taken from the town website, which is Douglas Ladder 1. It's a 2005 Pearson Forza area ladder. We did model that truck in our simulation and found that it operated quite well. So what you have on the left is the approach coming from the south on Birch Street, which comes from your main station downtown. So that would come up Birch Street, and as you can see, take the right turn maneuver onto Bellevoir, and then it would head to the site. That right turn, as I said in one of our presentations earlier, obviously, is a more restrictive versus the left-hand turn. The other approach that you're seeing is if it came down from the north, if it was at a previous call, and it's coming down from the north along Birch Street, and then takes the turn onto Bellevoir, that is the maneuver it would require. We considered showing it coming out of Bellevoir onto Birch, but it literally is the opposite of what you're seeing here. So what that shows is that demonstrates that it's able to make those maneuvers. So as I said at one point in one of the meetings, Bellevoir and its width down in this area, somewhere around 25 feet wide, the road does taper to a narrower width as you work your way toward Forest, but for the most part, it's like a 24 to 25 foot wide paved surface down at Bellevoir or at the intersection of Birch, and Birch is about 20 foot wide in that area. So that's what's represented here. And then at the, so that's the fire apparatus. Those were the only two outstanding questions that we have in our notes that were raised by the Board. And as I said, we were looking to defer it to Graves Engineering for their comments in their peer review and do their presentation from the Board. For the Board's information, we did have Graves Engineering, they have presented their comments to the Town of Sutton, as did Tetra Tech or did MDM, as they had here. Graves was not available that night that MDM was here, if you folks recall. But the Commission, they had also gone before these Douglas Conservation Commission and addressed the concerns of them. So it appears that Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering would perform the review. He's here with us tonight, Madam Chair.
Good, very good.
May I add something? I'm sorry. We might be looking at that 40-minute time limit, so it's important to let the folks on there that this might cut out. All right, so as fast as we can go.
Okay. Okay, could you read, what's the chat? And if everyone could please, from the public, refrain from using the chat. If you raise your hand, I will absolutely
Recording in progress.
The chat is not public record.
That's just the password.
Oh, password. Okay, thanks, Pat. What?
Broadcast, so it's really elementary to get the cable recording.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellick.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering.
Good evening. Would you like to add anything? I started the hearing with any contentious or items that were not agreeable to the applicant. They've stated that there aren't any. You're just waiting for the revised plans to reflect the comments?
That is correct. My letter went out April 8. I understand there are no disagreements between our firm and LDC. Since the letter went out, we witnessed soil testing at the stormwater basins, and simply we're just standing by, waiting for revised documents. That's a nice brief summary, and I'd like to keep it there unless we'd like to discuss anything in specific.
No, thank you very much. We're on a tight timeline right now.
Understood. So in summary, I'm going to be standing by.
I'm reaching out to her now.
Okay. Thank you very much for attending. Board, any questions? Yes.
To the chair. On the fire truck apparatus, I know Ernie brought up having it come up the other way. I like to see going from Forest on the road D, then the corner made from road D to road A on that
A radius?
On that reverse hairpin coming out, because everything will be coming up from the Douglas side, not from the Duval side. And when they come up on the Douglas side, they're going to be coming up to Forest, have to make the swing on the road D, then do the reverse hairpin at road A. They'll be going right, then hook them back left.
Mr. Bellick, do you have that? Sorry.
And if I could, the wheelbase on the town truck, is that longer or shorter than your previous truck that you?
That's a good question. That was about the same, actually about the same. So I do appreciate the question. Always good questions from the Board. We did, at one presentation, show the turning movements throughout the entire site, in and out.
Right. So if we could just get those details.
Yep.
And I apologize to rush you along. I just don't want to cut you off before we continue the public hearing. So we'll look forward to the plans. I'm closing you out at the next hearing. I didn't hear anything from the audience for comments concerned, so I've already called for that. Okay, Board, go ahead.
No, it's just that reverse hairpin.
You will supply Mr. Zwick with the turning radius diagram.
And if there is a curve there, like they did in Millbury, make that a soft curve so that, you know, what they've done at the 146 Millbury area there where they know the trucks will be making hard cuts, and you know people will be having yard work done, delivery trucks and everything.
Sure.
You make that a real soft lay of the curb so if the air cutting through there, you know, anytime you do a reverse turn like that, I don't care what people say, there's going to be trucks driving over.
That's true. And that's, I would tend to agree with Mr. Zwick on that. We have, as you folks recall, originally looked at the Type A Mastard Cape, no, a Bitcong berm, and then we have since changed it to the Cape Cod.
Good.
So it's got that low profile.
Yeah.
Excellent. So our next meeting is June 23. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Sutton Douglas Development to June 23 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwick. Second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwick, aye.
Ms. Schleschman, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. All of you have a safe holiday weekend. Stay away from COVID. You see it coming? You run.
Stay alive.
Thank you. You as well.
Already had it.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. You can get it again. You can get it again. Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Next item on the agenda, additional business.
Try to go as quick as I can.
Open space survey. Good? In your packet?
Yep, in our packet. Still available on the town website until, I believe, June 3.
Okay, wonderful. Next Friday.
Additional business item B, CMRPC Planning Board Delegate. CMRPC requires a delegate from the planning board. Unfortunately, our last delegate was Mr. Stevens.
Yep.
So we need to assign a new delegate.
You would like to go?
Sure.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Mr. Sokrath for the delegate, CMRPC delegate. Intertain a motion for nominations.
I'm sorry, I didn't
CMRPC delegate.
Do you want to go?
Two separate things. So the delegate's a member
Oh, you're talking about the public house.
Not on that yet. So the delegate is a member that would attend any of the quarterly meetings throughout You've done it. Okay, so you understand. So we're looking for the delegate first, and then we'll get into the annual meeting, so.
How many people are in, this is the awards presentation?
Nope, not yet. Not yet. We just need a delegate first.
Oh, okay, delegate, okay.
Typically, we have the newbie be the delegate of the board.
I want to make sure he knows what he's volunteering for.
No, it's his here, isn't it?
I think, no.
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 I'm volunteering for this.
We'll get to that in a second.
I'm not volunteering for that. Newbie on that.
So those are quarterly. That's the annual
Oh, my gosh, we're wasting.
Yeah, there's, those are quarterly. There's several meetings throughout the way that you would attend on behalf of the town. You could see different projects.
On a regular basis, I go to one, this thing, but that's about it.
We need, okay, maybe we'll table it for the next meeting?
Maybe, yes. Let's table that.
All right. So item C, Mr. Our economic development coordinator, Mr. Bob Bennerick is here to make an announcement. If you'd like.
I talked to Carrie Sawa this morning of CMRPC. She invited the, originally, it was just the chair and the vice chair to accept this award on June 9 at the public house. But as of this morning, she says, the more the merrier, so the entire board is invited. But it's all three boards, Uxbridge, Sutton, because of your work that was done on that joint planning board for the Blackstone Valley, which is their center. So on behalf of the town, we're getting an award. So it's at the public house. The information is in your packet. You're all invited. She needs an RVSP count, so if I can get an accurate seating count of who will be attending.
Right, at this moment?
I know, Aaron, you sound like you want to go.
No, I mean, if it's the awards day, why not? I mean, we should be there.
It's our day of start at 5, and I guess the awards start at 6.
Yeah, you want to go?
I'll go.
Ernie and I.
I don't know what day it is.
Tracy, you're golfing.
Maybe.
It's a Thursday.
Ah, yes, I am golfing.
Come on, Mike.
What time? 5 o'clock. Do you need a count right now?
Yeah, they need
Or May 31st?
I need to send, well, she says by 31st, but she called me this morning, where's the count? So I said, I'm meeting with the
Three.
Board tonight. Three. And they will be Ernie, Aaron.
And to be determined.
Yes, and one guest. One guest.
You're not.
I may be tied up.
How about Jake? Anybody read Jake?
We'll put in three, and we'll see what happens.
Let's go with three.
I think we should go, yes.
Three plus you.
Well, I need names, so.
We'll get there.
Hi, do you want me to call Jake?
We'll do three for now. We'll, 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 Mike get back to you, and we'll see what Jake says.
And you two gentlemen?
From the 31st.
Yeah, we have a big race here.
What's Thursday got to do with something?
So we got six minutes.
All right. We'll let you know. I don't believe I will be available.
I'll fill out the forms for you.
You going?
Yes.
We can go together.
All right.
Three of us?
Yeah, I'll, what time are we planning on?
It's 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock?
Give Tracy a break. She needs a break.
Don't know yet?
Yeah.
Pencil them in.
I'll say yeah.
Not yet.
I say keep it to 3, so we don't have to post a meeting.
Yeah, yep.
I'll go, yeah.
Jake, that makes four. Take us to the bus.
I'll text him this picture. Okay, we have two extensions for accessory apartments. I will take motions together or separately.
You got three.
Thanks, Bob.
You got three.
Three extensions? Oh, three accessory apartment extensions. I will take them together or separately. They are just extensions. All of them are blood relatives and have been reviewed by Mr. Benoit.
Yes, all are.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the three
Grant the extension.
Extensions to the accessory apartments at 144 North Street, 124 Martin Road, and 13 U Street as presented before us.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrath, seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor? Roll call, please.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Mitch Lesman.
Hi, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anything pressing?
Yeah, the only one that's pressing is the request for the bond release.
Okay, we have in our packet the performance bond amended Deer Crossing for the cash performance bond. It was requested to release the bond. Do we have a final number?
I don't see Mr. kneeling here. I do have the number. But the question I have was, we actually discussed this in, it's going to take me a second, I'm all scattered up for some reason.
Quickly, quickly.
I know, right? It's in excess of $46,000 and change, but I'll have that for you in a second. In November, we met on this, and they decided to table the bond until a section of the roadway was fixed. Mr. Marks
Yes.
And that had been addressed, and we acknowledged that at the next meeting. The question I had was, there's currently no bond left for the extension piece. There was never a bond for the extension piece. It's a private piece. So the bond we have now would just cover the public way that was already accepted at town meeting, and I feel can be released at this time.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to release the bond in the amount of
It was
$46,000.
Oh, God, where did I hide it? I always have this with me, too.
No pressure.
Actually, I don't have it.
No, I don't know. How's this one? Bond, the bond amount was, of course, probably sitting right on my desk. $46,000 and change, as printed in the treasure collector's office. I don't know how you want to put it.
I'll accept that.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker to release the bond.
Where did it go?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sokrath. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Mitch Lesman abstained.
Thank you. Okay, we'll release that.
We'll take your word on that one.
Thank you, sorry. One other thing is, we have two applications for associate member. One was for Mr. Richard Preston, I believe used to be a selectman and planning board member at one point in time.
He was chairman of the board.
Yeah.
A master plan? Didn't he do something with the master plan?
So we have his application. We also have Joseph Fitzpatrick's application. My recommendation at this time, and I do have that bond amount, there it is, $46,952.91. Sorry.
Do you want to do a friendly amendment?
So moved.
Okay, motion remade by Mr. Zwicker. Mr. Sokrath needs to make the second.
Second.
Second for revision of that bond amount. All those in favor, yep?
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
So
Thank you.
So I know this, and I'm trying to be as quick as I can. My recommendation would be to appoint Mr. Preston to the associate member, to have the experience with the board. And it still has to go to the selectmen for their nominations, so.
I think we're allowed to.
Well, we recommend, yeah, we have two spots.
We do. We do have two spots. Mr. Fitzpatrick and I had this conversation about him potentially joining Conservation because they have six members, and you guys should have an odd number. So he expressed interest in that as well, so.
Conservation is Dusty Town and by the town.
Right. Yeah, I know, it's not something I can formally recommend. I just figured we'd give him the opportunity to apply for that as opposed to filling in our second spot.
He requested in October 27, 2021, the board that he was applying for as planning board as an associate alternate position.
Right.
So
I mean, I don't see a problem with accepting both. If he decides to move on to something else, he can move on.
He can be on both.
Yeah, he can be on both.
Elected and appointed.
Correct.
And it's not even a, it's associate position. And then he could be appointed to Conservation as a formal appointment from the selectmen.
I've seen it once in all the years I've been on this board, we had one, and then we haven't had one since. I mean, I'm going back at least nine, 10 years ago.
I was an associate.
I think it's helpful to have an additional opinion.
So we can
I was too, but like 10 or 12 years.
When that goes off, we're done.
All right. Are we still
Yeah.
Are we still broadcasting through cable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I would suggest that we
Table.
Table these items, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I need a question, though.
What's your question?
We kind of have to
Nothing to do with
That has to be on. We can't take action without the zoom on.
Because we're a hybrid meeting.
Right.
Do you have a question that, before we adjourn?
Just a question. Has the paving ever been done out on 16 at that facility?
I have no idea, but we need a general question. I think it would need to be, or we can adjourn and could ask Mr. Benoit for an update.
Yeah, I think we have to adjourn.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
How about the minutes, the minutes? We're gonna
Mr. Zwicker made the motion. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sokrath. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.